Okay, got it. All right, we'll call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, June, July 27th to order. If I could ask everybody to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Invisible.
Liberty and justice.
For all.
Okay. All right. So it looks like we've got about eighty-three people in total online. Roll call, please.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Pat Grudy.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Karen Lundstedt.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
All right, so we note everybody present this evening. Our agenda, we'll start with a public hearing on renewal of the waiver of school code mandate to continue to count driver ed simulation hours toward a six-hour driving requirement. This is something we've done, I think, most years, for the last several years. Then we will vote on a motion to renew that waiver. We'll then open it up for public comment. I believe there are sixteen or seventeen letters. Is that correct, Mary? Okay, well, and we will read all of those tonight. We should be able to get those in in our thirty minutes, I think. Just a few comments maybe from me. Then we'll have the superintendent's report. Then we'll approve the consent vote agenda, which we reviewed earlier this evening in some detail. Brief updates from program and personnel and facilities and finance, which also met over this evening. Any update from CEDOL, Karen?
Just the scheduling, yeah.
Okay, so we have a brief CEDOL update. And Jim, anything from IASB?
Nothing for tonight.
Okay, and that should do it. All right. Okay, so let's declare the hearing open on public, on renewal of the waiver of school code mandate to continue to count driver education simulation hours toward the six-hour driving requirement. I will turn that over to.
Me.
There you go.
Close enough. We're proposing, as you note in the board agenda supplement, that we utilize nine hours of driving simulation in lieu of two-point-two-five hours of behind-the-wheel instruction. As Pat, you've mentioned, we've done this for years here. We have the advantage of simulators here. That allows us to move more people through the, accommodate more students through the driving phase. It's been very successful for us. It's not a change in practice in any way, shape, or form. In fact, it's a continuation of what we've done for a number of years in the district. But we are required periodically to go back and to renew our waiver. So that's the essence of what we're asking tonight.
Okay, and Mary, I don't believe there were any public comments related to the waiver, correct? Okay, all right. Are there any other comments? If not, I'll declare the hearing closed and ask for a motion to renew the waiver of school code mandate to continue to count drivers ed simulation hours toward the six-hour driving requirement.
I'm moved.
Right, is there a second? Second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
And Pat, I'll just note one thing. On this particular application for waiver requires my signature. It does not require board signature, but just evidence that we've done it at a meeting. So I've got the form in front of me. I'll be signing it, giving it to Carol tomorrow. We will process it forthwith with the state.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, let's open up for public comment. Mary?
Okay, thanks. Yep, the first message is from Lisa J., School Board members and administration. Again, thank you all for your effort and commitment put forth during this unusual time. I want to share my feedback from last Wednesday's meeting. Although I would have preferred the hybrid plan, I accept the decision for remote learning. I just want to express how important it is that we hold our teachers accountable to the highest level to which, I'm sorry, to teach our curriculum full-time. The past two meetings, it was very difficult listening to our administrators blame the state for our educational shortcomings this past spring. As a district, it is important to take responsibility for the decisions made, to not put forth the effort needed to help our kids progress. Many schools continue to engage learning, and we should have done the same. My immediate concern is the school calendar. To schedule finals, however that will look, after winter break, is a lot to ask of our students during these times. Our kids will be remote learning while isolated in their homes every day. The fall season will bring on colder weather, so the opportunity to be outside and social distance with friends will go away. It will become dark in the morning when they, when they wake and dark just after the end of the school day. Scheduling finals after break will not allow our kids to, to do just that, take a break, which they will emotionally and physically need more than ever. If curriculum needs to be adjusted for finals before break, then that is what needs to be done. And we have to do, and we have to have the flexibility to do so. We can also pass on, pass on taking finals for semester. Please, I am asking to schedule finals before break. Thank you for your time. Message two is from Joy Levering. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a comment. I speak for lots of parents among my acquaintance with students in the D-128 schools that were quite surprised by the decision to begin the school year with remote education instruction, as we are in Phase Four of the reopening plan where in-person instruction can resume with protective measures. More surprising to me than this, however, was the reason given for remote, excuse me, remote decision. News reports stated that the board could not think of a plan that precludes the possibility of someone contracting this potentially lethal disease. I feel this metric is far too conservative, especially in a disease that is less dangerous for kids and teens than the flu, and doesn't give enough weight to the benefits of in-person instruction. Since remote learning is the board's decision, I would like to ask, what is the plan? For how long it will continue? Is there a metric that, that can be met that will prompt the resumption of in-person instruction? Will this be communicated to parents? Thank you. The third message is from someone who asked that their name be withheld. Hi, I am fine with what the board picked, but I was thinking of a way to keep the kids involved is have the teachers at school and teach from the classrooms. It should be safer, and since no kids. I work in my office and I can take my mask off there, but when I leave my office, I put it back on. Maybe the kids will take it more serious that way. Please, thank you. Message number four is from Mary Jane and Andy Wang. Thank you so much for the hard work each of you put into the incredibly difficult decision-making process of coming up with the safest option. We know there was no good answer, only one that would cause the least amount of harm. We know you didn't make your decision lightly, and that each one of you tried your best to make in-person learning possible. We are grateful to you and fully support your decision. Message five is from Eugene and Oksana Pomeranets. Hi, I am a Vernon Hills High School parent and medical doctor. Our family, as well as numerous other families of high school students in our area, are deeply disappointed with the decision to proceed with e-learning in our district. High school children are not mature enough to be properly educated without in-person interaction with a teacher and other students. The spring semester clearly showed it. On the other hand, there is no proven scientific evidence that in-person learning would cause any serious danger to our children. I think the kids should be allowed to go to school and study in person, which I believe would be the opinion of the overwhelming majority. Parent and children that are not comfortable with it should be given an opportunity to do it online. The, the, the. I'm sorry, I think that's a misspoken word. The effect of social isolation in this age group outweighs any hypothetical risk. I damn, I, the damage to their education would be irreversible. I believe that we should be given the choice to make decisions about our children's future. Message number six is from Bush, Bushra Singh. I attended the board meeting last night and would like to congratulate you on successfully conducting such a tough evening with a great decision that will make us all proud in the coming years. It's been a very tough time for everyone, and tuning our hearts and feel the love and compassion is the demand of time, and that's all that will carry us through this time. I believe future generations will look back to us with respect on how we react today to this tough time. I also want to offer that any times the school needs help, parent groups will be there to support the schools in meetings, in meeting the demands of e-schooling. I would be extremely happy to create such a group if needed. Please feel to reach out, and we can plan. Wish you all the success in the coming year. Message seven is from Jennifer McBride. I just want to send a quick note to say thank you for your hard work. While e-learning wasn't what we had hoped for, we understand that there was a lot more that went into the decision than what we had wanted. We appreciate you taking everything into consideration and making the tough decision. The staff of LHS is fabulous. I have no doubt that they'll do everything they can for our kids, just like they always have. Our family is prepared to offer support and do whatever we can to help make this a great school year. Go Cats. Message eight is from Pete Miles. First, I applaud the board's decision to establish e-learning for the first semester, at least. Next, I hope the board remains firm on its decision and doesn't bend to the pressures of the individuals who cite politically motivated medical statistics concerning a virus that the scientific community is still attempting to grasp and understanding over. It's easy for anyone to assume younger people are most resilient to COVID-19, but we forget that children have been locked down in their homes for the first two to three months. So of course, they're going to have lesser numbers. Yet, as socially opened, we witnessed an increase in student illnesses, even right here amongst our own athletic summer camps. Again, the scientific community doesn't have the clear understanding of this disease. COVID-19 was first thought to be a respiratory disease, and new evidence is indicating this is a respiratory illness. And he provides a link with more information on that research. And there is likely to be continued evolution of comprehension of this disease. Anyway, I hope the board remains resolute in its decision towards e-learning. Message nine is from Katie Tellerico. Just a brief follow-up to comments made at last week's board meeting. Thank you, Mr. Huber, for prioritizing children and for voting for one-hundred percent in-person learning. To the board member, male, I can't remember which one, who brought up information about a pediatric, pediatrician who had emailed in, I am assuming that was me. The point of the American Academy of Pediatrics document that I sent in is that in many parts of this country, it is absolutely safe to return kids to in-person learning. Kids need to be in school, and that can be done safely. In Libertyville, there were, there, excuse me, where the current number of COVID-inpatients at Condel is around eleven, with safety measures in place, i.e. masking and three to six feet of social distancing as recommended by the AAP. It is safe to be in school, and kids should be. This might change, and at that time, full-time e-learning might be necessary, but that time is not now. Also, regarding comments from the same board member, which said something to the effect of, "An IDPH contact states that kids are the fastest-growing population of COVID cases." Kids weren't being tested for quite some time here in Lake County. I can attest to that, as I am a pediatrician working with the federally-funded health clinic for low-income patients in Waukegan. So that data is meaningless. To try to explain better, imagine if only one child got tested from March to May, and that child was COVID-positive. That's one positive case. If now many more children are getting tested, that, let's say, five hundred from May to July, and there's, and there are ten positive cases, statistics can say the number of positive COVID cases increased ten times in kids. That sounds impressive, but in reality, ten positive cases is not impressive. Please also remember prevalence does not equal mortality. This year, more kids have died from pneumonia, more kids have died from influenza than have died from COVID. These statistics from the CDC were included in the link in my email, but perhaps they were overlooked. Excuse me. Please have a medical professional helping make decisions regarding COVID and returning to school. There's a lot of data out there, and sadly, a lot of it is misleading. Please take us up on our offers to help make sense of it all. I know I am not the only doctor contacting the board. Utilize us. Message ten is from Jack Nicholson. Please consider refunding the three-hundred-dollar registration fee we all paid for the two, the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. The reduced cost of education for schools is a hot topic these days, and that would be the least D-128 can do. Message eleven is from Francesca Kraus Heinz. I would like to send out a personal thank you to you and all of the members of the board for understanding, excuse me, how dire the situation is. I myself am one of the immunocompromised students, so I feel I understand the risk more than other students, as I would be more susceptible to the illness. Even though I have circumstances that force me to open my eyes to the extreme risks, I feel that this virus is a hazard to, I feel that this virus is a hazard to everyone, and that my D-128 peers see this virus, see that this virus will discriminate when infecting school. Often, health concerns are ignored, because not everyone must think about certain things for safety. I am glad that you and the rest of the board have recognized the importance of social distancing. I am an academically strong student, but I suffered a great deal this spring with e-learning. Even with the struggle I faced this spring, I am confident that we can be successful while staying out of in-person school. I have taken three academic programs over the summer, two of which were D-128 summer school programs. I have been very successful in these programs. The thing that separated the spring from the summer has been that the spring was e-learning. However, the summer, it has been more remote learning. This makes a world of difference, because e-learning is just doing work on a computer, but remote learning requires an interactive experience. I would like to note some techniques that worked. I think either daily, or at least twice-weekly Zoom meetings are productive and help not only teach lessons, but are a great way to check in for directions, homework, and status of students and teachers. Have a daily schedule, have one place for all class, all classes and assignments. One of my biggest issues in spring was being disorganized, because either teacher was doing their thing, their own thing, and the departments didn't follow one method for organization. So it was hard to find directions and assignments. I, I understand that members of the board and parents were concerned about social interaction and mental health, but I think that students and teachers can still make meaningful connections without coming into physical school environment. Mr. Huber mentioned in the meeting that we can't take away the social life of our students. And although I feel his point is valid as a student, I would argue that we cannot have a life if we are not alive. Therefore, I am glad that D-128 has decided to stay remote, because I want a life after high school. The next, excuse me, the next message is from Michael Dementi. I am sending this note as a concerned parent. The decisions you've made recently regarding opening of school and the situation we are currently in are incredibly difficult. I am sure when you were all elected, nobody envisioned that you'd have to vote on such an important and contentious issue. I would like to ask the board and LHS to reconsider the recent decision to go all remote for the fall. I ask this for the following reasons. One, because your vote, I'm sorry, since your vote, the CDC and several major health organizations came out with recommendations to open schools in the fall. These recommendations are based on science and the fact that the risks associated with COVID-19 to the student population are minimal. See the links below. Then, two, the negative consequences of all remote class structure are substantial. Depression and increased drug and alcohol consumption are very real amongst the student population. I'm sure you're all aware of the horrible news involving two former LHS students. Nobody will know for sure if this lockdown situation was a direct cause, but it certainly didn't help matters. Three, a majority of parents in our school district supports kids returning to school. Most of the parents I've discussed this with are well-educated and are very informed on the topic. We realize the risks associated with COVID-19 and understand that it's, that it's impossible to completely eliminate risk from our, from the situation. According to the webcast in the below link from the CDC, sixty-four children under the age of eighteen have died from COVID this year. Every one of these deaths is tragic, and I cannot imagine anything worse than losing a child. According to the CDC last year, one-hundred-and-sixty-six children died from the flu. Again, all of those cases are tragic, yet we're not shutting down due to the flu. The education of our kids, oh, excuse me, the education our kids are receiving is suffering as a result of distance learning. I say this, yet I believe the district did a great job of pulling together a remote curriculum on incredibly short notice in the spring. Nobody could have been prepared for this, yet the district and the teachers should be commended for their efforts to teach our children in such a tough environment. I'm also sure the remote experience would have been better than in the spring based on having more time to plan. That being said, remote learning still pales in comparison to an in-person classroom setting. There is no stopping this virus. Unfortunately, it's the nature of this highly transmittable virus. It will be with us until late fall and early winter. Even with safe social distancing, it's going to continue to spread, and we need to focus on sheltering those who are at the greatest risk. Since children are a very low-risk group, it is proven they can go about their lives in a safe manner. Otherwise, we're looking at an entire school year of remote learning, which is completely unacceptable, given the current risks. Could you please call an audible and reconsider this decision to open up schools? There are many scenarios where this could be done, and we maintain necessary safety. I'm sure you've considered most every idea, and there are a couple on the outside chance you haven't come up with these. Push back the start date to after Labor Day and end date to June. This buys us more time, and it is a common practice on the East Coast. I actually think most parents would prefer this situation. Besides, I don't, I, it doesn't start getting nice here in Chicago until mid-June, anyway. Adopt a hybrid approach like Conant. Last, the last I heard, they are starting school with in-person instruction every other week, half in-person, half remote. Not ideal, but better than all remote. I've always taken pride in our schools, and this is such a great district. With two LHS grads currently in college, I can tell you that this is a district that has prepared my boys very well for college. It's one of the big reasons why we moved to Libertyville. And with a daughter who will be a junior, I want to make sure that she, she and the rest of the student body receives the same outstanding preparation that my boys received. Thank you for your considerations to this issue, and please contact me if you have any questions. The next one is from Ryan Harvey. It was with great disappointment that our family learned the D-128 board had decided to not return students to the classroom for the 2021 school year. I am amazed and truly baffled by this decision. The district's July 22nd email stated that children would be online, quote, "until conditions allow for larger numbers of people to safely return to the buildings." Given this statement, it seems clear that students will remain online until the fall of 2021 at the earliest, since there are no conditions that will change in the next six months, which will create safer conditions. As Alison Wonderland said, "When you don't know where you are going, any road will do." The board has not defined the conditions that would allow for a safe return, nor has safety been defined, so we are not going to get there. Here are some simple facts. Statistically, our high school students are far more likely to die in a car accident in the next six months than to die from COVID. According to the CDC, of the small proportion of infected individuals who have died from COVID, only point-one-seven percent of deaths are among individuals aged zero to twenty-four. Ninety-seven-point-three percent of all COVID deaths are among individuals over the age of fifty-five. Illinois has, is currently in Phase Four of Restore Illinois. Pre-to-twelve schools can open with IDPH-approved safety guidance under Phase Four. We will not be moving to Phase Five until the virus is eliminated. The CDC has recommended the schools open, as well as the American Pediatric Association. Fortunately, I cannot afford to take my children out of D-128 and enroll them in private school this year. However, many families do not have that option. You are damaging the lives of hundreds of children at a crucial point in their development. Your decision has real consequences. I urge you to reverse this uninformed decision. Next one is from Karina Theme. "One of the best decisions that my husband and I have made was transferring our kids from a private school to Vernon Hills High School three years ago, a school with excellent academics, a lot of good teachers, and so many helpful and friendly staff, like the security staff, ITs, the principal, registrar, etc. I am a substitute teacher, and I greatly enjoy helping students with math, especially at Vernon Hills High School. Here, I would like to share my concern and hope for e-learning. A day before school was shut down in March, a student told me something like this in math class, quote, 'Oh, please, don't let the school shut down. I am a virtual learner.'" Whenever I walked in the classroom, he would follow me and might have repeated, repeatedly said the same thing. My daughter, who loves school, did not have the best experience with e-learning. Sometimes, I could sense she was stressed. Very recently, I asked a student in my neighborhood, who is also from our school, "How do you like e-learning?" This was his reply exactly. "I learned nothing." I hope for e-learning, my hope for e-learning is this, that all District 128 teachers will consider video recording their lessons so that students can see with their eyes and hear with their ears what their teachers are teaching. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share my concerns and my hope for e-learning." Number sixteen is from Jenny and Vlad Sigler. "Thank you, thank you for providing an opportunity to share our comments with the board. My family and I were disappointed with the D-128 decision to continue e-learning this fall. We are all for protecting the community from COVID-19, but by closing the doors of the schools, we subject our community to even greater harm. Denying high school children a proper education and social development is detrimental to their futures and their current state of mental and physical well-being. The lower quality of e-learning education and lack of structure was clearly demonstrated during the spring semester. There seems to be options to have." There seems to be options to have kids back in classrooms and prevent or minimize the spread of the virus by simple measures of washing hands, wearing face masks and shields, bringing your own lunch, and social distancing. This pandemic, however horrible and saddening, is temporary, but the futures of many people would be irreversibly damaged. Please, if possible, reconsider this decision." Number sixteen is from Minu and Tushar Raval. "Our request is based on the board's decision of July twenty-second to start the 2021 academic year via one-hundred percent e-learning. Now that, now that the decision has been made, we want to ensure that the district holds students and teachers accountable so that D-128 can uphold the excellence it is known for. As parents of two high school students, including one that is a freshman, accountability will be a key aspect to ensure e-learning this fall will be significantly better than it was in spring 2020. To that extent, we are asking the board and administration, what plans will be in place to ensure this? One, expectations of students. Given over four hundred new students coming to Vernon Hills High School and even more into LHS, what checks and balances will be in place and communicated to the students to ensure they clearly understand what is expected? This would be in addition to any communication provided by teachers directly to their students. Doing this would ensure all students receive the same information and provide more uniformity. Two, since this e-learning format as a district will be new, do to the administration, does the administration have best practices that parents can choose to adopt to ensure e-learning is successful for their students? Does D-128 have data or analysis from other districts where e-learning has been successful and what parents should do or not do? Three, what measures will be used to ensure that teachers are being held accountable for providing a successful e-learning experience for their students? As parents, we felt the spring experience was not productive with too much variance across classes and highly dependent on the teacher. And four, can you clarify on the duration of e-learning? For example, Thanksgiving, all semester? Additionally, what is the framework the board will use to make a decision on transition to in-person? For example, will the district follow certain metrics? Sixty days in phase one positivity rate below two percent for two weeks, two weeks in phase five, et cetera? Thank you for your time." And the last message is from Vincent Boom. "Never before has there been a more urgent need for strong, elegant solutions and discussions to lead our community to the best possible outcome for our students, our parents, our teachers, and our future. We desperately need leadership, or else our city will die from lack of leadership, not COVID-19. The largest portion of parents in the recent survey voted to have D-128 schools open as normal. The Board of Education voted against their constituents' wishes. The parents intuitively know that schools are a critical part of a student's development. This intuition has also been solidified by the recent CDC School Opening Guidelines below. The impact of the board's decision will have long-term ramifications on our community and the future of our children. Have you ever had a sixteen-year-old boy cry because he was struggling to navigate online learning or losing out on varsity athletics or missing his friends? We have, and many parents have in our community. I hope you remember that it was what it was like being a child and being a parent of school-aged children. Wouldn't your intuition, along with the data from the CDC, drive you to action? Please find the link below regarding updated CDC School Opening Guidelines. It states quite clearly that children not being in school is a much larger health threat to them than COVID-19. If teachers are support, are unsupportive of schools reopening per the CDC recommendations, then they also have a difficult choice to make in this situation, no different than anyone else. Also, just today, there was a White Coat Summit on Capitol Hill in DC. The summit is providing a platform for the many, many thousands of physicians who have been silenced from explaining to the general public the vast disinformation campaign of COVID-19. There is a document signed by fifteen hundred physicians to get schools open as normal this fall. There is a document from the American Academy of Pediatricians, signed by sixty-seven thousand providers requesting the same thing. They are attached below. To disregard the input from tens of thousands of physicians across the US is to deny science. D-128 parents are being kicked by the Board of Education while they are down. Parents cannot work and have their children learning at home through e-learning. It did not work before, and it will not work now. The percentage of children getting food through school is also increase, increasing from skyrocketing unemployment. Enough is enough. Libertyville parents are done having their families held hostage. Parents are wanting their kids to attend in-person class and they, and can use e-learning. The rest of us want schools open, and the students definitely need schools open per the CDC. Stop disregarding science and D-128 parent wishes." And that is all of our comments.
Okay, all right, thanks, Mary, and thanks to everyone in the public who submitted comments in tonight, for tonight's meeting. We will cover school reopening in a little more detail again in the superintendent's report. All right. Otherwise, on the president's report, the only other thing I want to do is I want to publicly thank both Lisa and Casey and Tom and John for all of your hard work on doing the graduations this week. If you haven't seen those videos, they are outstanding. So also, I'd like to thank all the people throughout the district, really, who worked hard to pull that together. Obviously, I know it, it doesn't replace what we weren't able to do in the spring. But nevertheless, I thought they were extremely well done, and I just want to publicly say thanks to everybody that was involved in doing that. Okay, superintendent's report, Dr. Lee.
Thank you, Pat. We'll start with some good news tonight. This summer, VHHS students competed in the National FBLA Conference. It's Future Business Leaders of America. Students and events placing in the top ten nationally were Raoul Gupta, Srikar Manikanda, and Daniel Zwang, Network Design, second place. Kaveen Manavasigam, Anthony Smichaelov, and Pranav Swamanathan, Sports and Entertainment Management, fifth place. Xander Schwartz, Management Decision Making, sixth place. Andrew Tickenoff, David Munn, and Adicha Saberwall, Virtual Business Management Challenge, ninth place. The team is coached by Kate Isabella, Tony Isabella, Len Benson, and Kim Raciac. So again, those are national place finishers in the FBLA conference. So, so I think, as we talked about before, that's one of the larger student organizations, and those numbers continue to grow in that group, and they are very competitive and do a great job. So, next on the president's report is, is school opening. Just want to do a couple of follow-ups to the special board meeting and decision last week. Echoing Pat's general thanks. You know, we want to thank everyone, the board, the administrative team, the parents and students who worked with us on either the larger task force group or the smaller task force work, working groups that actually did a lot of the backwork on all three of the options for their tremendous input and their tremendous work as we, you know, tried to wind to a decision point for the district. Also, want to thank all of the community members who either communicated with the board or the administration, engaged in the meeting last week as part of that process and exercising your right to be involved in the process. And we appreciate all the feedback that you gave us. So several things, the board later tonight is going to vote on recommendation for the calendar for next year, which we covered in depth at the meeting last week. And so tomorrow, following the meeting, assuming the board approves the calendar, we'll be doing an email to the students and the parents and the staff regarding the calendar and the schedule that we will follow next year. Over the course of time, from that point forward, there will be a series of informational emails that will go out that will cover a number of details, and we'll chunk those together as best we can to keep the emails to a minimum. But, you know, we're beginning that planning process for moving forward. Most important thing on the calendar is the students will start later in August, August twenty-fourth, to allow additional planning time to really get ready for remote learning as we covered in, again, in great detail at the meeting. So that will be forthcoming after the board's decision tonight. Couple of other things we wanted to mention tonight that I mentioned in my comments at the special board meeting last week. We are already beginning to do some work on looking at how we might bring smaller groups of students back into the building. I think I mentioned last week at the meeting and our district director of special education, Kelly Hartwig, talked about as well. There are a number, but not all special education students might benefit from being back in the building. Perhaps some identified 504 students as well. So we'll be working with Kelly to see how we can bring those students back to the building, perhaps EL students. And we will continue to look at how we are able to, to do such things. For example, if students are, need to do the driving component of driver's ed. You know, we've had some practice with that over the summer, those are small groups of students. So we'll be continuing those conversations. We've already had some good internal conversations, we'll be continuing those conversations and looking further at that. And John has been a part of those conversations, and I just asked John to make a, a few comments tonight as, as, you know, we look forward to where we might go with that. And, you know, a couple of other examples of, of things we might be able to do. John?
Yeah, thanks, Prentice. I, you know, as I listen to many of those public comments, the, the idea that so much good happens when kids are on school is not lost on us. And so with, with the board's decision last week to go e-learning, but to kind of keep open the possibility of getting kids back on campus, kept both schools kind of buzzing with possibilities and ideas. Prentice has mentioned a couple on the curriculum side based on, you know, what success we've already had with our driver's ed over the summer. And, you know, I, I probably shouldn't name specific courses, because as soon as I do, especially at our place, that names specific teachers, and we wouldn't want to throw teachers' names out there, because I think some of what we do will have to be voluntary in terms of teachers being willing to come in. But we are looking at some performance-based classes that we might be able to bring in, you know, from areas like applied texts and arts and physical welfare, some of those kinds of courses where the hands-on types of experiences are so important. Obviously, last week, we talked quite a bit about things that might happen after school on a normal year and wanting to continue those ideas and programs relative to fine and performing arts, athletics, and some of our activities and clubs. Excited to get some of our sponsors, coaches, and leaders involved in those areas. You know, we have a lot of programs in the school that are important to the functions, and we'll, we'll start some of those here relatively soon, within weeks, as early as next week with Chromebook, Chromebook distribution, getting kids on campus to get some of their technology. We've got, you know, sophomores, juniors, and seniors, last year's freshmen, sophomores and juniors who need to get back, drop off materials and pick up materials. So just getting them into our halls and into the, into the school will be important. We have a group of incoming freshmen who many have never stepped in our buildings before. So both Tom and I and our teams, Ray, and our teams are looking for in-person freshman orientations. Obviously, smaller groups at Vernon Hills were tackling it almost by bus route. So, you know, if you, you think you got fifty kids on a bus, we're going to invite kids in by bus routes, basically, to keep those numbers small, keep them distanced. And we've got plans in, in place for that. And then the last thing, Prentice mentioned some of our supports. He mentioned EL students, some special ed students. But our LST and Student Service Areas has all sorts of groups throughout the years relative to social work support, groups like new students, new students to the districts, grief and loss, kinds of meetings that we would want to be able to continue to run. Academic supports, I know at Vernon Hills, Dr. Young has a group of tutors, student tutors, who we could still develop procedures and processes to keep kids safe and bring them in to get tutoring support. We have other programs like Paws, Prentice mentioned EL. And then I know I've received several emails from parents of seniors who are really concerned about post-secondary planning. What is our plan in terms of our CRC? In, in terms of getting information? And also just direction for these kids as they start to plan for life after high school? So I know our CRC departments are busy planning those, and we look forward to getting kids into the building for some of those things. So, look, the, the list is long, and, you know, like I said, we're excited to kind of brainstorm ways to get students in. We'll be working with Dan to figure out transportation. Obviously, some of the older kids can get in here on their own, but we're going to need to work on making sure we can guarantee all kids can get here who need to, and, and we have programs for. You know, these won't be mandatory, and certainly if parents are concerned about sending their students to us for these kinds of programs, we're not going to force that issue, but our hope is to make available, you know, lots of these programs that I've mentioned and many others.
Okay, John, thanks for, for that update. So we'll continue to work on that. Related, unlike some districts who have put a final point or at least a marker down about how long they're going to do this, some districts said, you know, a semester. Some districts have said, you know, into late October. You know, we've chosen, as we talked with the board last week, to leave that question open, which we think allows us maximum flexibility if we are able to bring smaller groups of kids in and build that up at some point. Looking at, you know, bringing, you know, more kids in over, over a period of time based on conditions. But one of the things that we will continue to have a conversation with the board about is kind of where are those markers and what are the metrics we want to take a look at when we have the next discussion, whenever that is? If it's a month, if it's the first quarter? You know, what does that look like? And so we have done some thinking about that. We will do some more thinking about that. We'll have some conversations with the board in terms of their thinking of that. But again, that's, that would be the idea that we're periodically reviewing kind of where we're at. You know, where is our section? If you noted, you know, the state has been divided up even further into areas, and, and Lake and McHenry County are now, I forget the number, but whatever number, numeric number they, they gave to that area, they divided the county, the state up further so they can drill down tighter on the data moving forward. But you certainly want to restate to the board and the community and let everyone know that, you know, that's the idea. The idea is we will continue to review where we're at, that we don't make a fixed point and say, okay, we're going all the way to the end of first semester. We're not taking some watch points along the way. Not that other districts won't be doing that as well. I certainly don't want to throw them under the bus for that, because I'm sure that's their plan. But that's what, you know, we will certainly do. Another area will be staffing and contractual services. I think as many people are aware, if we go to remote learning, we need to do a thorough evaluation of the staff, we need to do that. Some students will still need supports, even though they're virtually. There are things that we're going to have to do in terms of supporting the students. But we're in the process of a thorough review organizationally. but we're in the process of a thorough review organizationally of the human resources that we will need to do remote at the level that we believe we will need to do that. So you know, as we go through that review and we share that with the board, you know, there's a possibility that some support staff members may see hours cut or there's a possibility that, you know, some, you know, maybe foreload for a period of time depending on what our needs are, but we're into that analysis now and we'll be sharing that with the board as well. The other thing that I wanted to share with the board tonight in the community, I think several meetings ago, it seems, it seems, just seems like a long time ago, I'm sure it was only a couple of meetings ago, but we said to the public that all school districts, all 852 school districts in Illinois had discovered basically on the same week that none of us had liability insurance for COVID-19. And no matter whether people were self-insured, they had gone out in the marketplace and they were, you know, insuring, insuring with an individual liability provider, or they were in a very large co-op like we are, we're in probably, I think Dan, the biggest probably school co-op in the state, CLIC, our liability insurance co-op. But in further checking, Dan with CLIC, us with our attorney for the district, in fact, that is true, that school districts do not have liability insurance. So we made some calls to two of our state senators, Senator Link and Senator McConkey, and one of our state representatives, Mary Edley Allen, who were unbelievably responsive on a Friday before the July 4th weekend, reached out to some people. Kevin Huber also has some contacts in Springfield. He was good enough to do some reaching out to his contacts as well. And I think that made a difference because I got an immediate, I got a call back right after the 4th of July holiday from general counsel for one of the state organizations downstate. So the update on that as we've been waiting is that apparently the governor did, does not have authority under current Illinois school code to just be able to include schools under his general executive order that held hospitals, healthcare workers, and I believe first responders immune from liability. The two do not interface and he's not able to do that coverage for schools. So we require legislative action and my understanding is that that had really great momentum. So I know our local legislators did what they needed to do and it had really great momentum. If you've been following the news, several school districts downstate in southern Illinois made very public proclamations, they were not going to follow any of the ISB or IDPH guidelines regarding opening school. And the governor felt it necessary to take a preemptory strike and really begin to litigate with those school districts and that really killed the legislation in place, right? That, that discord. So the legislature will not be back in session until November at the veto session in which I believe that will be taken up. I believe that will have great bipartisan support and I will believe it will pass easily. Until that time, school districts, like other government agencies, there's a higher stand, standard to meet to prove that they're liable. And really the school district has to operate under willful and want to neglect. In our case, that would mean that we purposely did not follow ISBE and IDPH guidelines. So it's very incumbent upon us in this gap that we can do what we've been doing, of course, and that we continue to follow those guidelines because the standard for somebody to bring suit against the district and be able to prevail will be at a very high level as long as we've followed those guidelines. And again, we are not the only one. Every school district in the state, Dan actually went out to the marketplace to see if we could purchase insurance from an individual provider. And we have discovered that not even, not even Lloyds of London will write a policy for COVID-19 because it's a pandemic. So that's where we sit right now. Just wanted to make sure that we update that. I just received an update on that information over the weekend and that's where we, that's where we stand right now on that. So those are the updates under school reopening at this point. And I just want to say again, on, on certainly behalf of all the administrators, that, you know, we care about your kids and we know you want your kids back in school and we want your kids back in school. We just want to be able to make sure that we can do that, make sure that they're healthy and safe, but also that the 462 adults that work for the district, that work for the board as employees and that work for us as administrators are also safe in that process as well and that we can normalize that experience to the greatest extent possible. So we thank you again for your patience and your understanding as we've gone through this process together. We certainly understand that, you know, a, a number of people disagree with ultimately the decision that the board made. And we have another group of people that are appreciative of that and we have some people in, in the middle. But what I'm going to ask everybody is this, we have built this great district. We've taken a great district over the last 15 years and we've made it into an incredible district, which again is measured by the growth and achievement of our students over a period of time. That's why we're getting that recognition. That's been a result of a plan, a vision, a plan, and it's all working together to get there. And I'm going to ask everybody to work with us and help us make remote learning as we start the school year, the best remote learning in the country. I've said that twice now on meetings that are taped. You need to know that many of our staff members emailed after that meeting and said, I'm in, count me in, I'm ready to go, let's go, let's do it, let's, let's do exactly what you talked about. So those teachers that you've worked with for years in this district, who have done such an incredible job with your kids that you've acknowledged have done that, are going to be the same teachers that help us plan, develop, and execute e-school as opposed to, you know, remote learning last spring and the limitations that it had. So I'm going to ask all of you to come together and work with us wherever you're at on the spectrum of the decision-making and, and really help us continue to serve our kids very well. So happy to, any questions or comments on that before we move on to the next part of the program?
Hey Prentice, Kevin.
Hi, Kev.
Thanks for doing that. Could you go maybe a little bit more into the metrics and how you're going to communicate that with the public? Because again, that seems to be a big theme, we even heard it again tonight. Again, it's, it's almost a theme of hope, right? Again, we have to have some type of a, and I appreciate you getting the small groups in, I think that's fantastic. But at the end of the day, what, where is it going to be to move bigger groups in? You know, that, or, or not, we don't know what's going to happen, right? Or not, but, and how are we going to communicate that with the community?
Well, I, I think Kevin, the, you know, we continue the openness of the transparency of our conversation and I think that conversation is going to happen with you as between us and probably maybe what we collect and look, look at and in discussion with all of you very publicly, I think is the way that's going to happen. So I would say as, you know, we, we kind of roll into the next series of meetings, then, you know, we're going to be able to probably look at some other things. You are all, as you have done during this whole time, you are looking independently at things that are out there. Pat has brought a couple of metrics forward for us to take a look at as well. And then I think we have a very public discussion about that and what that might look like. And I think that's exactly the way it needs to happen and that it should happen and that it will happen, you know, working with you as board members because obviously, you know, you need to be a part of that conversation with us as well.
And Kevin, I'll, I'll make a few comments here. I mean, because I, I know I've talked to some residents about this myself. So, you know, obviously things we will be looking at are the local caseloads and looking for those to be stable and not increasing as they are today. We'll be looking at things like the availability of testing. We know even within our own community and our own district, people that I'm aware of that have waited upwards of 13 days for a test result and that's just not acceptable. We just can't afford to have people waiting 13 plus days for a test result. We want to make sure there's adequate resources to do contract, contact tracing within our, you know, public health community because that's really going to be key to mitigating this thing. And then, you know, as we all know, there are some school districts frankly, that have made a different decision than we have. And so I think their experiences over the next couple of months will also be very valuable to us in terms of really understanding the true impact of, of going back. So there's a lot of things for us to look at. And, you know, I, I guess I'll add to that too, that I hope that some of our surrounding states actually also show improvement because we know people cross the borders pretty regularly. And, you know, just today, Wisconsin got added to the list of people that they won't let into Chicago. So, you know, we're, we're surrounded by some, some hotspots, even if they're not in Libertyville and Vernon Hills per se, but those are the kinds of things I think we'll continue to work with our public health officials to, to put some good metrics together.
Yeah, Pat, I, I met a couple of things, I think that's awesome. Is this now the right time though to engage our, the medical community? Again, we heard from the pediatrician who wrote in for the second time. And again, you talked to some people, you're, you're a doctor, so you understand this better than most, but is this now the time? It's not really fair to sit here and pound on Prentice or Dan or anybody else. Is, is it time to have a side group that basically does their best thinking and then reports to Prentice? And again, doesn't have to be we accept it, but it is a different way to think to try to solve this, these, this metric condition. Because everybody, we've heard from 400 comments, everybody thinks a different metric's important. But again, I don't know how to do it, but I don't know if it's really fair to the administration for me to every meeting say, hey, what's the metric? You know?
So I mean, I, I think it's going to be a collaborative thing. I don't think it's going to be just up to the administration to figure this out. And I think yes, we do, we do need to solicit some additional, you know, resources. I mean, just to clarify, I am a doctor, but I'm not a medical doctor. I don't want to mislead anybody. So, you know, I, I think by all means we'll want to consult people. And I, look, I understand the American Academy of Pediatrics has gone out and, and said that they think kids should be in school, but they also came out after they said that and they kind of softened it a little bit and said, well, but it does depend and it depends on what's going on in your location and some other thing. And as I said the other night, yes, some doctors have written in and said, we should get the kids back to school and other doctors have written in and said, no, we shouldn't. So, but to your point, yeah, I think we need to solicit some, some, some external expert resources because I think at the end of the day, even when we go back ultimately, there's always, there's going to be risk. We know there's going to be risk. And, and I think the other thing I want to clarify, we've had some letters where people have said, how come we're not taking the safety precautions that some of the other people that are going back are? And I want the community to understand, we are. We've taken steps. For example, the, our, our plan is to have, I believe it's even hands-free sanitizers in every single classroom, okay? We have plans for doing temperature checks as people enter into the building. So we're, we're taking, I think, all the same precautions that a lot of other schools are doing. And to the extent that there's something we're not doing, we certainly can. So, you know, I do want to reassure people that write in and say, well, why can't we take these, we are taking those precautions, we will take those precautions. I, I don't envision any scenario where we go back where those things will not still be very important to do going forward, at least for the foreseeable future. Okay, but I'm also, I'm, I'm not going to say, we're going to sit here and wait till we get a vaccine before we get to go, go to school because I have no idea when that would be and I'm very confident that, you know, we're going to continue to learn more and more about this and we'll figure out how to get back to school with or without a vaccine. That's just my own personal opinion, but that's where, that's where I'm at on it.
Agreed. We could, we can do, I think we can do some back work. There are other districts doing, you know, the same thing. And then we can talk about how we can fold in, you know, an independent group or people in our, you know, area that, you know, can look at this from a medical standpoint. I think that, you know, certainly makes sense, right?
And I do, I do, I do want to echo the comments I think both Prentice and John said about our teachers because a lot of the feedback that has come in, I think from the public has also said, you know, you guys made the decision that the teachers wanted and things like that. And I can't emphasize enough, that is not how the conversations with our teachers went. I agree that in the original survey results, yes, there were more teachers that actually preferred a remote option than, than say our students or the general public. But I got to tell you, when every single conversation we've had with our teachers, one, they have, they never told us which option they preferred, okay? They have never been anything other than supportive of either option that we would decide. And again, the thing that was motivating to me in a lot of those conversations is, you know, I think Prentice made the comment, you know, they want to get on, they want to get on with it, they want to get, they want to figure it out, they want to learn how to do this and do this well. So, you know, I, I do just want to, you know, correct it with the public. It, it was not a decision based on what the teachers wanted by any, any stroke of anything, okay? You know, yes, all their input was, was important, but that, that was not how we ended up in this position at all. It was very unfortunate for our local teachers that at the same time we made this decision last week or just prior to this, you had this CPS, the, the Chicago Public Schools Union come on, say they favored remote and all this kind of stuff. Those were not the kinds of discussions we had with our, with our teachers union, they just weren't.
Hey Prentice, you know, Pat, Pat raised, and this is a great point actually, and that is the ability to get our test results back or even to go take a test and get your results back quickly. And I know we had some momentum, may, a few weeks ago maybe, with a local provider or local, a big local provider that may be able to help us in that regard, may have gotten put on the back burner, I don't know. But can we continue to go down that path to see? Because ultimately, whether it's the kids at school, the teachers working, the kids playing sports or whatever it may be, that may be a path, we need to have that in place irregardless that we can go up close, get the test results within 48 hours and feel safe because, and again, contact tracing, that's a whole other story. But I think testing, I think we can maybe solve that to some extent, so we're ready to go whenever that may be.
I think the answer is yes, Kevin. I think your question was, can we continue to follow through on that? Now the answer is yes.
I appreciate it.
We certainly can.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on that before I move to the next part of my report?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, thanks. Next is capital projects update. We went over this at the FNF committee meeting tonight, but we want to make sure that every board meeting, we're updating you on our major capital projects. So Mark, you want to give us the overview?
Sure, Prentice, thank you. Every summer we do maintenance projects. At LHS, we've completed abatement throughout the school in certain areas. We've replaced flooring, we've replaced our sand pipe system, made repairs in there and done some majorly remediation. So those jobs, those are all complete. We are on track with our tennis court reconstruction and roofing projects at Libertyville. At Vernon Hills, our maintenance project, we're completed the pool painting project and our tennis court resurfacing and carpet installation projects are on track for completion here early in August. For our major capital projects, and we've been doing district-wide at Libertyville High School, our old pool remodeling project, that project is complete. So the dance studio, multi-purpose gym, and weight room, we have received occupancy from the ROE for that project. At Vernon Hills, we're moving forward with the academic wing. In the, we're working towards completing the cafeteria expansion project as well as the expansion for our teachers in that area. And then we moved to the gym and to the dance studio and those will be completed early this fall. That's a quick summary of our projects.
Any questions for Mark?
Good job, Mark.
Okay. Next thing on the superintendent's report tonight is for your request and I'm required to, we are required to read these into the record. So we had four since our last meeting, so I'll begin by reading them into the record. This, first for your request was received on 6/24/2020. The response deadline was 7/1/2020. The requister was Tim Grahammons. Information requested any and all records pertaining to the rustic pathways trip that you canceled involving my daughter. This is to include any and all emails between you, any district employee, any rustic pathway employer representative, any emails to any Rustic Pathway employee or representative, any emails to your legal team, any emails to board members in between board members, any drafts of emails sent in replies or working materials, any board meeting preparation materials to include any and all notes, any and all meeting agendas, meeting minutes, any and all payments made to Rustic Pathways, any and all payments made from the district to involve participants of the trip, any and all financial settlements with the involved parties, any and all Rustic Pathways District 128 contracts regarding this trip. I also need a list with contact information of all trip participants, not only for this trip in 2020, but for every affected District 128 student and family that that is awaiting a return of their money. Follow up was done by Brian Kelly. Response was we we requested a five day extension that was sent on 6/26/2000 because of the voluminous nature of the request. Reply was received from a requester to replace the to place the FOIA on hold on 7/1/20. The time that Brian spent on this was approximately three hours. So FOIA request in 6/24/2020, response deadline 7/1/2020. The requester was Tanner. Requested information, one, for FY19 and FY20 through March 30th, 2020, please provide transportation fund expense, Fund 40 ledger information summarized by vendor and by total annual spend with each vendor. Two, additionally, please provide all transportation invoices by vendor if possible for the full months of December 2019, January 2020 and February 2020. Follow up was done by Dan Stanley. Request was fulfilled and the response was sent on 7/1/2020. Time spent approximately four hours. Third FOIA request, FOIA request received on 7/1/2020. The response deadline was 7/8/2020. The requester, Ashley Wallace, Paralegal at Varnell and Warwick, PA, 1101 East Cumberland Avenue, Suite 201H, Number 105 Tampa, Florida. Information requesting contracts between School District 128 and Heartland Payment Systems and or my school bucks, legal terms for my review. Follow up is done by Dan Stanley. No responsive, no responsive records. Response sent 7/3/2020. FOIA request received on 7/6/2020. Response deadline 7/13/2020. Requester again, Ashley Wallace, Paralegal, Varnell and Warwick, same address as the previous request. Information requested, copy of all contracts between School District, School District 128 and Chartwell School Dining Services. Follow up was done by Dan Stanley. Request fulfilled and response sent on 7/10/2020. And Pat, I have no other this evening, so that that completes the superintendent's report.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay, next, the consent vote agenda is listed. We did review this in detail earlier this evening. So if I could ask just for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed.
So moved.
Okay, second. Okay, is there any further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Groody.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next, Program and Personnel Committee Chairperson Batson.
Thank you, Dr. Groody. We have second reading and adoption for some board policy updates. These were reviewed in two different committee meetings and also put into the record for a first reading at last month's board meeting. So these have been reviewed and no additional adjustments have been made. So need a motion to adopt these policies.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Groody.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We have item B is a resolution to regulate expense reimbursements for board policies, board member compensation expenses and 5:60 expenses. This is maybe, Brian, maybe you can give us a quick overview of what this is?
This is a yearly resolution that the board adopts and just really outlines, you know, regulation of your reimbursement as board member. So it's a good checks and balances each year on your reimbursements.
Hey, thank you. This was discussed earlier as well in committee meetings. So can we have a motion, please?
I move to approve the resolution to regulate expense reimbursements for board policies, 2-125 board member compensation expenses and 5-60 expenses.
Second.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Groody.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. We have the first reading for an additional six policies here. 2:20 School Board Meeting Procedure, Policy 4:180 Pandemic Preparedness Just in Time, Policy 7:40 Non-Public School Students, Policy 7:190 Student Behavior, Policy 7:340 Student Records, and Policy 7:345 Use of Educational Technology, Student Data Privacy and Security. So these are being submitted as a first reading. These were reviewed in committee earlier. They will be reviewed again in committee next month and then up for adoption at the next board meeting. So any questions on that, comments?
Maybe we should point out, just in case people aren't aware, that all of these documents are available on our website. So we have read all of these documents prior to the meeting. So we know all of them are. So it doesn't look like we're just glossing over things. These are publicly available. It's not the most exciting reading, but it's it's something that we have to do on occasion is to review what our policy is. And there were some changes in policy as a result of the pandemic. So some of these highlight those changes.
That's a good point. Actually, the pandemic preparedness was a policy that existed. And this just updated it based on some new information that's come out from Illinois Department of, or the Illinois Board of Education, State Board of Education, amongst some other things. There's been some legal changes. We actually subscribe to a program within the state that, within the Illinois Association of School Boards that recommends policy adjustments based on a significant number of legal minds getting together and looking at these. So these are regularly reviewed and recommended for updates. And in addition, we, as a board, just so the public knows, we take the somewhat unique position of reviewing our policies so that we have a regular, thanks to Brian Kelly, we have a regular review of of policies from front to back over a span of so many years. We we have a rotation where we we just briefly go over a whole set of policies at each meeting. So I think we're probably as informed on policies as as any Board of Education, at least in the state. So just as a note here. Next on the agenda is item D, Memorandum of Agreement. This is Appeals Process for Unsatisfactory Summitive Ratings. Brian, maybe you can just give a brief overview of that, too.
This past year, a law, public act was put into place that school boards have have an appeal process for teachers that receive an unsatisfactory summative rating. The this appeal process needs to be in place by the start of the 2020-21 school year. So this past year, you know, we convened a group, worked with our administrators, worked with the teachers and the teacher union on putting together this appeal process. So our final group, Rita and some of the union leadership, Dennis Duffy, we worked out, you know, some of this language. And this is our final language that we will put into place for the 2020-21 school year.
Hey, thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the Memorandum of Agreement for the Appeal Process for Unsatisfactory Summitive Ratings.
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments on this? Again, this was reviewed in committee earlier. Okay, hearing done. Could we have a roll call, please?
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Groody.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. One more item, E. It's the Second Amended 2021 School Calendar. This was actually mentioned at last week's special board meeting. And this is some minor adjustments based on the our process for returning to school. So we have a motion on this.
Jim, before we do that, there may be some people out there that don't have a lot of visibility to how how challenging it can be to put our calendar together. And, you know, from balancing days between semesters, I want people to have a good understanding of why we've made this change with finals and revisit that it is a temporary change because of the, you know, pushing the start of school back a little. So if Rita could just do a real brief, if if it's possible to do it briefly, because there is a lot of detail that goes into planning our calendar.
Great idea, Casey. Yeah, thank you. Dr. Fisher?
Sure, thank you, Casey. And, you know, you certainly know that detail, having served on the committee multiple years as a chair.
Here and dear to my heart.
Yes, so the changes that we've made to the calendar for this year are to push the student start date back to August 24th. That provides two weeks of professional learning for teachers. Teachers will return on August 10th. By pushing the student start date back, the impact was to imbalance the number of days, first and second semester, if we did not make an adjustment to finals. As part of our e-school guidance, we had already talked about the intent of looking at final exams differently, given the likelihood that at some point during this year, we would have to address changes that resulted from the curriculum last spring as well as a potential of e-learning in the coming school year. So our guidance includes that the first semester final exams are not going to be scheduled on final exam days. They're going to be determined by teaching teams based on the needs of the students in that particular course. For those reasons, we thought that balancing the semesters by pushing the end of first semester to January 13th would be a temporary change. We do like the way that we scheduled in the last several years, the ability for students to have a true break at winter break by having first semester final exams before winter break. But in order to keep first semester and second semester with a similar number of instructional days for semester-based courses, we thought this one-year change of pushing the first semester date back would balance the number of days. And having that semester final in January would not have the negative impact of, you know, returning from a break to finals because the exam schedule will look a little bit different. There'll be regular student attendance days and teaching teams will make decisions about the course final experience, whether it will be some form of exam, a culminating project, or perhaps there will be not a need for a final exam to end that first semester. So that's a team-based decision. But it does result in having the same number of days, first semester and second semester. There are a couple of other changes in the calendar, I should point out. And legislation this year calls for Election Day to be a holiday. And so we did move the Veterans Day holiday on November 11th to Election Day, November 3rd. We also adjusted, there was a previously adopted calendar for next year, included March 19th as an additional day, Friday, March 19th, that was tacked on kind of to spring break as a way, again, to balance those semesters and to provide the requisite number of student and teacher days. That day was moved into January to provide kind of a break at the end of the first semester. So spring break is is no longer Friday through the following Monday. It's March 22nd through 26th. So all of those changes, and then the last day of school on June 3rd, graduation remains Thursday, May 27th. All of those changes were done to accommodate the very unusual year that we'll have this next year and to try to, you know, keep our instructional days to the degree we can, similar first semester and second, and to address really the number of announcements that we'll have in the coming school year in regards to when we'll actually have in-person school again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rita.
And thank you, Casey, for bringing that up. Can we have a motion, please?
I motion to approve the Second Amended 2020-2021 School Calendar.
Second.
Okay, anyone else have any questions, comments related to this? Nope. Okay, roll call, please.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Groody.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Unless anyone has anything under the category of other, that concludes the Program and Personnel.
All right, thank you.
All right. Well, thanks, Pat. So we had a meeting earlier this evening as we talked about, I want to give kudos to our Assistant Superintendent of Finance, Dan, who walked us through the fiscal year 2020 budget and results to date. So thanks to Dan for doing that. It was very enlightening. So again, kudos to you, which leads into our 2021 budget. And we didn't, we need to have a notice calling for that public hearing. And I believe we talked about, the process is going to be, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, we are going to have an internal meeting on August 10th that I believe the public can listen into. Yes?
Correct.
We will then have a notice for the public hearing where the public can weigh in. That will be on August 24th.
Yes.
And then the board's plan would be to digest and vote on a special meeting on September 10th. Is that maybe?
I don't know the September date.
That's that's close, Kevin. I think that's.
I think the 14th.
Is it the 14th? Okay, the 14th. So again, it's kind of a three-layered process of present the budget to the board. Everybody's welcome to listen into that. Dan's going to go through it, educate us, public weighs in on August 24th, and then the board takes a vote in September 14th. So what we're trying to do tonight, though, is the notice for calling the public hearing on August 24th. Do we change the time, Dan, or do you want to leave it at 6:45?
I thought we left it at 6:45 based on our discussion, but I I could be wrong.
Nice. Again, I think that's fine because then we'll have meetings to follow. So.
And this is the pattern we've had. We're just basically shifting everything forward two weeks.
Okay.
So.
So does anybody have any further questions on the budget process for 2021? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the revised public notice of special board meeting, public hearing on the 2021 budget as presented?
No, you don't need to.
We just wanted to talk about it.
We just wanted to talk about it.
Okay, great, so if we don't need it, then we will.
That notice will go out.
Yeah.
Awesome, okay, then we can move right on, no other questions? All right, we're moving on to rental labor charges, Dan?
Yep, we have the labor rental, so when we have people that rent, we have staff or workers that work that, that gets, that's part of the charge for the rental. And we have a recommendation for this year to hold all of the rental rates flat except for the two student rates, the student technicians and student lifeguards. And the reason for that change is because they are getting paid more, so we're adjusting it corresponding to that. And there's a few change, a few minor changes in some of the benefit lines because our I R F costs have gone up. I R M F is our, the contribution we have to make into the pension system for Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, which is like for support staff, so custodians, security officers, that kind of stuff, that cost has gone up a bit, but otherwise, we're keeping our other rates flat.
And this is for people when they use our buildings, this is what we charge, yes?
Yeah, correct, if they need this, one of these services.
If they need one of these services. All right, we did discuss this earlier, any other questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the rental labor rate charges for twenty twenty-one as presented? Thank you, second? Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, Carol, you want to call, roll, please?
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, so next topic on the agenda is our athletic training and strength conditioning services. We reviewed these potential contracts earlier with Dan, Dan, anything further to add?
Uh, nothing further to add, but I can rehash anything if you'd like.
You want to give a thirty-second, what the summary of the contracts are going to be for length of term?
Yeah, so five-year agreement for athletic training services with I B J I, Illinois Bone and Joint Institute at L H S for two F T E positions and a part-time position that would be billed hourly. One or two full-time positions for Athletico for a term of two years and a contract for a five-year term for strength training with Illinois Bone and Joint Institute for a half position at each building for a five-year term.
Okay, we did receive four proposals, so it was competitively bid out and these were the two that were selected based upon review of proposals. Other questions by the board? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the recommendation of hiring Athletico and I B J I as presented? Of course, subject to attorney review and final contract signing by administration.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Dan, does that give you enough flexibility what you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay, great, all right, Carol, you want to call, please?
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
All right, that one passes, next contract, it is a state contract and it is for us purchasing copy of paper. Not much more to talk about on that one, I don't believe, Dan, anything further to add?
Just that, we're asking that the authorization is up to the twenty-three thousand because, you know, if we don't need it, we won't order it.
Right, depending on volumes, okay. Other questions by the board? All right, seeing none, may I have a motion that the board accept the pricing from the Illinois Master Purchasing Contract as presented awarded to Midland Paper Company and Wheeling for the purchase of standard-sized white paper, copy paper for the twenty twenty-one school year in an amount up to twenty-three thousand one eleven sixty.
So moved.
Second, please? All right.
You want a third?
We're too quick.
Everybody wants to be efficient, so we're good, so other comments? All right, seeing none, want to take a vote, please, Carol?
Carmichael.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, so now, of course, we have to figure out where to put all that paper when we're done with it, so we have a trash and recycling contract that went out, so Dan, elevator speech, give you a minute?
I'm gonna turn it to Mark.
Okay, Mark?
Okay, we went out and we had a contract with Groot, we spoke with Groot and negotiated prices for trash and recycling pickup at Libertyville High School, Vernon Hills High School, and at the Administration Center. All presented in the committee meeting a little while ago, any further questions?
I'd just like to point out that the contract that you've presented is an advantage in light of opening in the remote model because most of these services, a substantial amount of the cost will be for services that are on-call, so as needed, so thank you, Mark, for doing that.
You're welcome.
Kudos, Mark. All right, other questions or comments to Mark, comments about the contract? All right, seeing none, can I have a motion that the board accept a five-year contract from Groot Recycling and Waste Services in Round Lake Park, Illinois for trash and recycling services at the district's facilities and the high school facilities effective eight one twenty through seven thirty-one twenty-six?
So moved.
Any amount, why don't you state the amounts if you could there, Mark?
Well, that's kind of tough because it's going to be, right?
Is there, is there a total number?
There's not a total.
Because some of them are on-call.
Yeah, that's true, yeah, my mistake, sorry.
Yeah, no, just as the rates presented.
Yeah, right, that's fine, yeah.
So moved, as presented.
Thank you, Lisa.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, further comments? All right, seeing none, let's call it, Carol?
Grudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
All right, thank you, any other for Facilities and Finance? No, seeing none, Pat, back to you.
Thank you very much, Kevin, CEDOL, Karen?
Yeah, just to give you a quick update on CEDOL and how they're going into this fall. The CEDOL sector classrooms, those that are being held in host schools will follow the host school decision, so the classrooms that are placed in District one twenty-eight will follow District one twenty-eighth's decisions. Right now, there's a survey out to parents and staff to choose between the following two, it's due back on July thirty-first. They're going to, and this is, there's some tweaks to this, depending on their different buildings, but this is a general understanding, there will be an onsite phase-in of their hybrid. It's going to begin with a couple weeks of remote and then it's going to phase into two days in person, three days remote, from mid-August till about mid-October. Then it's going to phase into four days a week in person, one day remote, from mid-October to winter break, and those dates are a little flexible depending on which building you're talking about. And then the other, the other option for parents is the five-day-per-week distance learning. So they will be hearing back from everyone, their staff and their parents on July thirty-first, so I'll let you know kind of how that goes after they find out that information.
Okay, thanks very much, Karen. All right, no I S B, and is there anything else tonight? No? Okay.
Yeah, just one more reminder to the community, because we don't always have seventy-five or eighty or a hundred people or a thousand on with us, and that is, the board does its deep-dive work at the committee meetings and part of the reason we relate coming into the board meeting tonight is the in-depth work that we were doing in Program and Personnel, but tonight, more Facilities and Finance, as Dan went over the budget, so we always encourage the public to attend the P and P and F and F meetings because the board does a lot of of the heavy lifting and deep discussion there and does summaries of those meetings at the board, at the board meetings, so it's important that the community knows that, you know, the board does some, some really, really deep work at the committee meetings, so. Pat, back to you.
Good, okay, great, thank you, all right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, anybody?
Second.
All right, roll call, please?
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, good night, everybody, thank you.
Good night, thanks, everyone.
Good night.